The June 17th Special Meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Please rise for the salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Mohammed?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
And Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Madam President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows. On June 3rd, 2025, it was emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education and Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside for the record. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy for those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed all of your comments so as to not interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak. This evening, we are fortunate to have five candidates who applied for consideration to fill two vacant board seats. Seat one replacing Mr. Harris and seat two replacing Mr. Velez. These candidates are as follows: Fazoun Ahmad, Vincent Coughlin, Diala Ewes, Stephon Lally, and Stephen Muscardi. Each candidate will be invited up to the microphone to make a brief statement why they believe they should be appointed to the board. We ask that you keep your statements under five minutes. Their board will then retire to closed session. When the board returns from closed session, we will conduct nomination and vote on the appointment of each of the board seats. Seat one replacing Mr. Harris, seat two replacing Mr. Velez. If an appointment is made, the candidate will be sworn in by the Business Administrator Board Secretary, Mr. Wolferman, and assume the seat on the board and take their seat on the dais. Mr. Fazoun Amjad, please come to the microphone. I apologize that I butchered your name.
All right, I got some remarks right here. You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So, good evening, everyone, members of the Board of Education, parents, teachers, and students, and other members of the public that may be watching on the Woodbridge Public Channel. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. Now, before diving into my vision for the district, I'll briefly introduce myself. My name is Fozan, proud resident of Woodbridge, New Jersey for about 20 years now. I currently work at Deloitte Consulting, crafting innovative solutions aimed at criminal justice reform for federal and state clients. Additionally, I'm also a board member for Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey, where I have the privilege of shaping academic policies, overseeing mental health initiatives, and ensuring student success. Fun fact, actually, one of the reasons why I got into government, sort of government-adjacent work, can be sort of stemmed from a tour of the New Jersey State Capitol that I got when I was in AP Gov., and the person that was doing that tour was Dan Harris. Now, enough about me. Tonight is a moment that truly matters for the future of our students and our community, the heart of education's preparing our students, not just for today's world, but a future that we can scarcely imagine. And as we stand on the brink of unprecedented technological advancements, we must, you know, face these opportunities and challenges and embrace them head-on. AI is here and contradicts some fears, right? It's not about taking over the world just yet. The truth is, students are going to use AI. When I was in school, they were using Photomath, now using ChatGPT. So, instead of using it as a replacement for learning, they should be taught how to use it as a tool. It's about empowering students and teachers, enhancing creativity, and revolutionizing how we approach learning. Imagine a classroom where AI helps personalize education for each child, addressing learning gaps created by the pandemic, and allowing teachers to do what they do best. Inspire. Now, beyond technical advancements, one critical issue that's close to my heart is mental health. Mental health isn't just a side issue, it's central to student success. I've seen firsthand how important it is for our students to have easy and stigma-free access to therapists and counselors. Creating welcoming communities in our schools where students feel safe and talk about mental health is essential. It's vital that we foster environment where mental health resources are not just available, but openly encouraged and easily accessible. Our students' emotional and mental well-being is just as important as their academic achievement, and addressing mental health proactively and comprehensively is the cornerstone for our district's vision. Our journey towards the future must also fiercely guard against threats to academic freedoms that form the cornerstone of our education. We must stand firm against censorship, support open dialogue, and create safe spaces where students can express themselves freely and courageously. As someone who led initiatives against student and faculty doxxing at Rutgers University, I understand firsthand about protecting academic freedom, what it means to protecting our community's most fundamental values. Now, equally important is the battle against inequity. In Woodbridge, no child should be left behind because of their socioeconomic status. Imagine if every student had access to healthy meals, vibrant extracurricular activities, and supportive athletic programs. Imagine if we equipped our students to become advocates themselves, champions of their own education, giving young people a voice in securing essential funding and resources for their own district. Now, of course, addressing these concerns and challenges means supporting our incredible educators and staff. The backbone of this district, teachers deserve our unwavering respect, support, and gratitude. Ultimately, our mission is clear: to open the doors and remove barriers, enabling every student to achieve upward mobility regardless of their background. I wouldn't be who I am today without my roots at Mobbie Street School Number One. I am a forever Ford's Middle School Falcon and a JFK Mustang. And Woodbridge is my home. It's a community that shaped me, inspired me, and motivated me to strive for excellence. Together, let's pioneer a new era of education in Woodbridge guided by compassion, equity, and innovation. I'll be honored to serve to ensure every student has the tools and opportunities to not just dream big, but achieve big. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amjad. Next, we will welcome Mr. Vincent Coughlin.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Coughlin. I'm asking for your support to select me to fill the open seat on the Board of Education. I believe that strong public schools are the foundation of a strong community. As a proud product of the Woodbridge School System and a lifelong resident of Woodbridge Township, I know that part of what makes this the best town around is how well our school system works. I've seen firsthand how a good education and good educators from this school district can take you further than you even think is possible. Unlike most kids in high school, I knew exactly what I wanted to do for a career before graduation. I love television. I've always loved television. So, when it came time to apply for college, I applied to the best TV programs I could find. I went to Seton Hall for TV production and spent a decade working at CBS Sports. But the idea of working in television came from my kindergarten teacher. I was five, so I don't remember exactly the assignment, but we had to tell the class what our favorite television show was. Most of the kids were hitting the classics: Sesame Street, Magic School Bus, Little Bear. But I was honest, and I told her that my favorite television show was The Late Show with David Letterman. This created two questions from my kindergarten teacher, Ms. Pesculgin. First one was she asked my mom how a five-year-old knew what a television show that started at 11:30 was and why he enjoyed it. The second is after that I was no longer allowed to tell people my actual bedtime. But the third and most important thing that came from this was Ms. Pesculgin's encouragement that I could one day be on TV. Good teachers are invaluable. They have profound impact on students' lives, both academically and non-academically, and it's critical that teachers have support from their Board of Education. I now have a law degree, and I'm at a point in my life where I can give back to the community that gave so much to me. Serving the community in the Coughlin House is the way of life. My dad has been a public servant my entire life. My mom spent most of my childhood dedicated to the Woodbridge School System as a PTO president at School 25 and Ford's Middle School and the presidents of President Council. My aunt was a school board member in South Amboy for 10 years. You'll find no bigger supporter and believer in public education than me. I now have a two-year-old son, who with my wife, Robin, also a product of the Woodbridge School System, and have chosen to raise our son in Woodbridge. So, the future of the Woodbridge Public School System is very important to me. That's why I'd like to become a Board of Education member. The impact that this board is able to have on students, teachers, and the community goes far beyond the thanks that it receives. Right now, school boards everywhere, including ours, are navigating serious and complicated issues. We're still dealing with effects from the pandemic on learning. Students have fallen behind, and we need to keep working on targeted support and creative strategies to close those gaps. At the same time, there's a growing focus on student mental health. Our kids are dealing with anxiety and stress that require more open conversations in our schools. We're also facing pressure around curriculums: what's taught, how it's taught, and who gets a say. These are big questions that deserve careful thought to protect the integrity of education while making sure all families feel heard. And then there's school safety, an issue that's on every parent's mind. As someone who lives right next to Woodbridge High School, it's on my mind even without a student inside. We need to make sure our buildings are secure and our students feel safe every day. On top of that, there's the very real challenge of funding. How do we invest in the future without overburdening taxpayers? How do we make smart decisions with resources we have? These are questions that need to be handled with transparency and care. I don't have answers to these issues, but I'm willing to put the work in alongside all of you to find the solutions that best fit our school system. I'm hoping you'll give me the opportunity to do so. I've lived the value of public education, and I want to make sure that the next generation of students has the same opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. Next, we will welcome Dalia Ewes.
You got it right, thank you. My name is Dalia Ewes. I'm a resident of Ford's, a lifelong resident of Woodbridge Township, and more importantly, I am a mother of two incredible sons. One is a rising sophomore at home studying for finals tomorrow at Woodbridge High School and the other a rising fourth grader at School 25. I'm also an aunt, and my nephew's graduating from Woodbridge High next week. I'm here today to express my interest and passion to serve as a member of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education. As a lifelong resident of Woodbridge, I attended School 25, Port Reading School Number Nine, Ford's Middle School, and Woodbridge High School. As a proud graduate of this very school district, I know firsthand the power of a strong public education, and I am committed to helping shape a system that continues to uplift all students. As a mother, I bring a deeply personal and vested interest and perspective along with a strong desire to see our schools succeed. I have volunteered my time throughout my children's student careers, both as a member and as an officer of their PTOs. Additionally, I have participated as a parent member on School 25's DEI Committee, now the Multicultural Committee. I am motivated not just by my desire to improve my own children's education and their experiences at the schools they attend, but to improve those very same things for families in the broader Woodbridge community. Because this is home, my home, our home, and I care, and I want to see it better than how I found it. And I found it to be great, by the way. A strong community thrives when it is whole and when we each do our part to make a positive difference for the collective good. I truly believe that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts, and this idea also holds true when it comes to the success of our students, our families, and our schools. We can't be successful unless we're all successful together, and through this role, I believe that we have the power to make that happen. My professional life has been rooted in public service and education. My career started at Liberty Science Center, where I promoted the museum's mission of inspiring generations of scientists through hands-on learning. My path led me to a community development nonprofit focused on education, youth development, housing, and community building in Patterson, New Jersey. The number of lives touched through that organization's work is truly profound. I later found my passion for civic engagement during my time at the New Jersey Senate, where I was a part of the action of the legislative process. I then joined the world of higher education and academic research before public health found me. As a public servant, I know that the work that we do can feel thankless at times. Trust me, I work in public health right now at this day and age, so I know. And we don't do it for the glory either, but we persist and we persevere because we know that the small role we play can have a meaningful impact on lives, real lives, real people. Whether through my career or my volunteer work, I have always been driven by a strong sense of mission and a desire to give back and help others. Serving on the Woodbridge Township Board of Ed would be an extension of that commitment. Helping to make our community stronger is a win for everyone, especially our children. I know it's cliche to say our children are the future, but they are, and we owe it to them and to ourselves to equip them with the tools necessary and a solid foundation so they can lead us to a better future. I believe in responsible governance, transparency, and collaboration, and I understand the critical roles our schools and education play in the overall health of our community. I am particularly passionate about ensuring that every child, regardless of background or ability, has access to the opportunities, support, and inspiration they need to thrive, to be confident, and to be successful. Today, as a mom, I see the various challenges our youth face today: the rise in AI, the influence of social media, cyberbullying, gun violence, suicide, and mental health, and all the isms and phobias you can think of. Challenges that perhaps always existed but that I never imagined would touch my life and my children's lives in such a strong and direct way. I believe our schools and education can play a big role in tackling these challenges on an individual level and on a societal level. In sports, they say, "You miss all the shots you don't take," so I want to take my shot at being part of the change that I want to see in my world, in our world, to make my community safer, healthier, stronger for our children and families. In closing, I want to say that I will bring the perspective of a parent, the experience of an alumna, and the heart of a public service to every decision should I be so fortunate to serve on the Board of Education. I want to thank you for your public service, because again, I know it can be thankless, and I want to thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ewes. We will now welcome Mr. Stephon Lally.
Good evening, Madam President, and to the members of the board and its officers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Stephon Lally, and I'm here today to express my heartfelt interest in serving on the Board of Education. This moment means more to me than I can fully put into words, because Woodbridge isn't just where I live, it's where I was raised, it's the community that shaped me, supported me, and helped mold me into the person I am today. I'm a proud product of the Woodbridge Township Public School System, and I currently have a younger sibling enrolled in the district. So, when I speak about the importance of our schools, it's not from a distance, it's personal, it's family, it's home. Outside of being in the clergy, I believe there is no higher calling than public service. It's about putting people first, leading with humility, and using whatever talents instilled in us to lift others up. That belief has guided me for years, from the earliest steps into leadership all the way to this moment. As a lifelong resident with deep roots, I believe in the power of public education, not just as a pathway to academic success, but the very foundation of a strong and thriving community. Our school district serves more than 14,000 students, and behind that statistic is a rising student with hopes, dreams, and a future that should matter to all of us here today. But we also must recognize that today's students are navigating challenges far different than those we face. From mental health to cyberbullying to social media and academic burnout, our children are facing a world that moves faster and expects more than ever before. That's why now, more than ever, they need adults who are willing to stand in the gap for them, who will advocate for safe, supportive, and enriching learning environments, who will prioritize not just test scores, but the whole child, their mental well-being, their personal growth, and their sense of belonging. I'm stepping forward today because I believe every child in Woodbridge deserves access to high-quality education, the kind that opens doors, builds confidence, and creates lifelong opportunities. And I believe every educator deserves to be supported and empowered to do what they do best, inspire and educate the next generation. If selected, I will bring passion, integrity, and a genuine commitment to doing what's right for our children, faculty, and staff. I want to help strengthen the bridge between our schools and our community, and I want to be a voice that listens, that learns, and that leads with passion. I'll end with this. When I first ran for student government many years ago, I made a promise to the campus community that every public speech I would give would begin with the words, "It's an honor and a privilege. It's an honor to serve you and a privilege to hold the position." That promise just wasn't for show, it was a commitment to service, to respect, and to accountability. And today, I make that same commitment to the board, to our students, to our faculty, and the public at large. This would truly be a full-circuit moment for me, and to serve the town that has given me so much and to play a small part in helping it grow even stronger. It would be an honor to serve and would be a privilege to do the work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lally. And finally, we have Mr. Stephen Muscardi. Or maybe we don't. We did receive notification that he would be here, but not seeing him, I would like to turn to our attorney, Mr. Bush.
Thank you. Thank you. Just for the board members' purposes and I guess for the public and the candidates, we appreciate certainly all the comments made by everyone today. This is the interview under Board Bylaw 9113. The board's going to go into executive session to discuss the candidates, and the way we're doing it is it implicates potential privacy interests, we're going to talk about the positives, potentially negatives of each of the candidates. So, you want to have that discussion, obviously, out of the public view, but as soon as you come back, assuming that you've agreed to nominate, you know, at least one candidate, you have up to two here that you'll be putting into this position here tonight, you should come out and just make a little statement about why you're supporting them, the person who's nominating at least, so that the public has an opportunity to understand that. But yeah, this is a, you know, there's a possibility, I guess, for the candidates that if the board needs further information, we may come and get you, any of the candidates, so we can glean that as part of our discussions, to the extent that that's necessary, but certainly not required. And with that, I'll turn the microphone back to the board president.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. And thank you to all the candidates. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Trebowser, would you please read the closed session statement?
Thank you, Madam President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of the meeting. The discussion to be held in closed session will be regarding personal matters and privacy interests. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reason for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exists.
Let me just correct that, this middle paragraph here. The discussion to be held in closed session will be regarding personal matters that may implicate privacy interests. Okay, that's just different slightly.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, a second by Ms. Perez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So motioned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trebowser, second by Mr. Sedana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Mohammed?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Trebowser?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Before we proceed with the nomination process for new board members, I'm going to just quickly read a resolution or an agenda item for the board, the non-conflicted board members to vote on. The Board of Education hereby directs the board president to, one, incorporate the previously submitted feedback into the superintendent's evaluation, and, two, provide the superintendent's evaluation to the superintendent on or before June 30th, 2025. So, I just, you would need a motion from someone who's not conflicted?
Motion?
A second?
Second.
And then, and all those in favor, smile.
All these in favor, a motion by Ms. Perez, second by Mr. Sedana. All these in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
All those opposed?
And then, any abstentions?
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
For the record, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Trebowser have abstained, and it's, so it's a four, zero, to two vote. Mr. Wolferman. Okay?
Roll call, Mr. Wolferman? Oh, no, I don't have to do that.
That's it. Now, we just move back to the nomination process.
Okay. We're done, sorry. My bad. I don't like this off-the-cuff stuff. Okay. So, now we're back to business. Do I have a motion to open nominations?
So motioned.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Nominations for the vacant seat of Board Member Number One and Board Member Number Two are now open. I'll accept nominations for the position of Board Member Seat One. Do I have any nominations?
Just to clarify, before we move any further, the board secretary, seat one was the one that was previously held by whom?
Mr. Harris.
This is the seat that was previously held by Mr. Harris, board seat number one. Okay? We're going to do this one seat at a time. Okay, so there's nominations.
Any nominations?
I would like to nominate.
Ms. Perez?
I hereby nominate Stephon Lally. Stephon's unwavering dedication to the community is a true testament to his longstanding commitment to the township. His passion and dedication make him a natural fit for the Woodbridge Township Board of Education, and I believe that he would be a tremendous asset.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. I have a motion by Ms. Perez nominating Stephon Lally. Do I have any other nominations for seat one?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Ewes, Dalia Ewes, for the seat. Dalia's comments about governance, transparency, and collaboration, I think, plays a big role in the position for a Board of Ed member. She is a driven public advocate, and she spent a lot of time volunteering and a lot of opportunities, and I believe she brings a lot to the table that would benefit the community of Woodbridge Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
For seat one.
For seat one. Seeing none, I will...
Close nominations. Is there a motion to close?
Is there a motion to close?
So motioned.
Mr. Trebowser, motion to close by Mr. Trebowser?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, so for seat one, we have two nominations for one person, and since there are two nominations for one seat, rather than a yes or no vote, I'd ask you, the board members in the roll call, Mr. Wolferman, to ask them to read off, rather than yes or no, to vote by last name. So, just by saying Lally or Ewes. Okay? Ewes. Ewes? Ewes, I'm sorry. Ewes or Lally as you cast your vote. So, Mr. Wolferman, you can call each person's name, and then they'll cast by last name either Lally or Ewes.
Ms. Anderson?
Lally.
Ms. Perez?
Lally.
Mr. Mohammed?
Ewes.
Mr. Sedana?
Lally.
Mr. Trebowser?
Lally.
And Ms. Bourdain?
Lally.
Congratulations, Mr. Lally. We're now moving on to seat number two. I'll accept nominations for the position of Board Member, seat two. Do I have any nominations?
Madam President?
Mr. Trebowser?
I would like to nominate Vincent Coughlin to fill the position of Joe Velez. I feel that he will be an ideal candidate and bring a lot of diversity to the board, and his future endeavors will certainly be a benefit as far as his legal aspirations go. I think Mr. Coughlin will be an outstanding candidate for the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Trebowser. I have a motion by Mr....
Any other nominations?
Joe Velez. I feel that he will be an ideal candidate and bring a lot of diversity to the Board, and his future endeavors will certainly be a benefit as far as his legal aspirations go. I think Mr. Coughlin will be an outstanding candidate for the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Trebowser. I have a motion by Mr...
Any other nominations?
Oh, sorry, any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close?
So motioned.
I have a motion by Ms. Perez nominating Vince Coughlin, Vincent Coughlin.
The nomination was made already by Coughlin, so you just motioned and you get a close, right? That's all right, I know, okay. So now, if you only have one last name, I would just ask that the Board Secretary call the name Vincent Coughlin, and then you just vote yes, no, or abstained.
For Vincent Coughlin? Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Muhammad.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Ms. Borden.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Coughlin.
You're going to do them both at once, right?
No, don't want to.
Do you want to time? Okay.
Mr. Wolfman will now administer the oath of office to Board...
To Mr. Lally.
To Mr. Lally for Seat One. I just want to mention that what an honor it was to have Speaker Coughlin here to give the oath to his son, correct? Vince, Vincent. Thank you for being here and thank you for doing that this evening. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So motioned.
Okay, I have a motion by Jonathan Trebowser.
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Meeting adjourned. Congratulations.